Six o'clock, so let's start the meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Sherry.
Just one moment here. My computer logged me up. Feeney?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
Ziegler, my understanding is he will be late. And Jean?
Here.
And Ermeling?
Here.
Okay, uh, public comments, we have the, uh, Zoom only for audio, do we have any? Anybody online or called in through there, Nate?
Uh, we do have a collection of people that are on the line.
Okay.
I don't have all full names.
Who would I call, go to, I mean, how does that come in?
If they want to speak, they can unmute themselves and speak up.
Oh, cool.
All right. All right, so if there's anybody that is listening and wants to comment, take it on unmute and make your comments now. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to minutes of previous meetings, uh, March sixteenth meeting and April second meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
Most by Maloney, second by Feeney. On the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, reports, minutes from boards, committees, or commissions, and we do not have anything further on there. So we will move to item number eighteen, reports from departments, administrator.
Okay, um, I guess a couple of things that probably need a little bit of discussion here, under my report. Um, well, late last week, we got the, uh, extension or the announcement about the extension of the safer at home order to May twenty-sixth. Today, we received an update of sorts here from the governor's office as well about the Badger Bounce Back Plan. It has a number of different criteria for when things may start to get rolled back. I have not had a chance to really digest it or what, you know, what it contains, uh, they have stages. They're describing criteria to reach for different stages of reopening businesses and so forth. We may talk about this, I think, a little bit under the park director or park and rec report as it relates to our aquatic center.
Did that just come in through the municipality then?
Um.
No, I got it today.
I think it came from, uh, might've come from a media website of some kind.
But I think Evers did a press release.
He did a press release today.
Okay.
And there's some, uh, there's some, you know, testing and stuff, criteria that has to happen first. But he's definitely going to relax.
He was talking about having certain numbers of people that would be able to do tracing of the contacts that people that they discover have infection. And then they would have a person follow up with all their different contacts, I guess, was one of the, one of the conditions of one of these stages. So, I think something just for everybody to be aware of, I guess, and trying to get educated on, I suppose, as much as we can. Again, one of these, it's one of these sensitive changes, it seems, on a very, uh, fast base basis, it seems. I think we'd all like to see more relaxation, my, in my opinion, we would rather see relaxation and let people make their own choices about things, but that's just me. So.
I agree.
Um, I had a list of some of the events that we would normally be scheduling this time of year, um, the rummage sale, we're not promoting. It violates, it actually violates the safer at home order. Farmer's market's going to be continuing, our large, uh, drop off is going to be conducted. Uh, the spring electronics collection's been canceled, a fall collection's going to be scheduled. And we'll talk about the aquatic center a little bit later here. Um, park shelter reservations, swim lessons, anything related to the aquatic center. We're not taking any, uh, applications anymore, and if we, for the park reservations, once we get down the date that they would have had their event, they'll be refunded if, if they don't have the event. And we will be having curbside brush and leaf pickup. We have, we don't know what that is, that dates are for that year.
We just heard today that, um, the county will be lifting seasonal weight limits, um, in this part of the county on Thursday. So we'll probably then officially just put out the word that pickup will start the first week of May. Just so that people have time if there is stuff to get rigged out that they haven't already, we can get that taken care of though.
Okay, in my report, I made mention that, um, there are some communities in the state that are offering their own business, um, relief packages, if you will, on a very nominal basis. Mozeni had one where they were doing a grant for fifteen hundred dollar cap. City of Racine had something, and, uh, I don't necessarily think that's in our realm, I think it's just a point of information for us. I think we do have businesses that are concerned about their ability to stay, um, solvent in business when this is all over. I think Tom Sharktray may be on the line, he's, he's been in touch with people, our business community, just to see how things are going during this time. Trying to get him in touch with the people that do have the resources. Uh, I know there was a, a reauthorization of some additional money, at least that was on the table for Congress, for the pay, uh, payroll protection plan. That would be, I would think, the avenue that our business community would be looking at more so. Um, I don't know if there's any comments about that particular item. If not, um, the other thing that, um, I guess before we talk about our CIP, the other thing I wanted to mention, we have a, uh, a claim that's been made against us from two coin-operated amusement, um, companies, if you will, that have these probably like slot, not, not slot machines, but pinball machines, and taking it, and I talked to Greg, Greg Schmitt about this, as well as the attorney that's representing the, uh, the claims that were made on behalf of the, uh, League of Municipalities. Anyway, this claim, they're for very small dollar amounts. Uh, they're objecting to the fact that they're, they owe any, um, furniture fixture and equip, and equipment tax, which is provided for in state law. So the advice from the attorney is that we, um, allow these claims to just not be, um, entertained, that they, and if we don't take any action on them, they're automatically denied, uh, by our board. He also indicated though that the League of Municipalities was taking the position that we should just allow these to, um, or should we should, we should just pay these off. Greg says that that's a bad idea, that, you know, that's just going to open a can of worms and create a precedent, that was certainly advice to the attorney. So, I guess, understand right now that the advice we're getting from two other places other than the League of Municipalities insurance company is to let, or to deny the claim essentially, and, uh, see if the amusement company here decides to file a suit on their own, they have ninety days to do that. And if they do, we still have the option to pay them or take some other action. So, I guess the downside would be that if they do that, we potentially could be on our own to defend their lawsuit. But these amounts are very, very small, so I'm not sure that it's going to be worth it, that's kind of the advice that's, that's been given at this stage.
But would it set a precedent if we did that?
If we paid the, if we paid the claims, yes, it would start a precedent, right.
So then now there are ten thousand dollar ones, so now the precedent's already set.
Right.
Okay. All right, so do you need a mo, a motion to deny or just do nothing?
I think we just do nothing, they're denied by a matter of, uh, time elapsed. This was something we had a little difficulty getting connected on during the initial part of the COVID situation, so. All right, the other item, wanted to visit or talk to the board here about a little bit was our capital improvement plan and municipal facilities planning particularly, um, in light of the kind of the topsy-turvy situation that's now occurred. Perspectives from, I guess, an economic, um, side here and, you know, what, what we would like to do or continue with, um, at our last meeting that we were together for on March sixteenth, we had taken some action on a level of debt that we were comfortable with, on a capital improvement plan. Things have, I guess, in my mind, changed here, uh, we have some uncertainty in the, in the mix, so I guess I just wanted to, uh, revisit this with the board a bit and get some perspectives on what their thoughts are.
I, I know I had a conversation with Keith on this, um, I mean, things have drastically changed. Bottom line is for, uh, to put a new municipal facility, we need public support, you know. The need's there, we've had a, the existing facility's sixty-five years old. So, and we have to plan for the future, but right now, given that people are out of work and where the economy's at, there is, it's just not an appropriate time, and I think we need to revisit this, but we have to make sure that, um, the economy's turning around, we have people who are back and employed, because there's no way that we can justify putting in a multimillion dollar building when people are out of work. It's just not going to sit well. The need is there, and I think when, when we get this turn, the economy turns around, we get people back employed, I think then it will be an appropriate time to, you know, start educating the public and have some of the meetings discussing this, but right now, we need to put this off until, until we get a turnaround, that's my thoughts.
I, um, I reached out to several people, um, and I, I know the money's, you know, very attractive right now. And, um, but the timing just isn't there, so I just think we've got to take a little breather, let this, uh, kind of go through this and see where this takes us. And, um, I think in your, in your thing, you said it wouldn't be being built this year anyway.
No, we had to pause that.
I think next year, I think next year, there's still a opportunity.
So I think what you're saying, what's, what you're saying that we, we should really prepare what we want to do for a public relations or public information campaign, which is, was the plan. My, my initial thought after hearing how low bond rates were is that we might think about moving it up a little bit.
Right.
And I think that maybe that idea is not a good, not good at this time.
I, I'm very fortunate, uh, the people, my family, that we have jobs, and, but I know a lot of people that lost their jobs or are on furlough right now. And I, I would have a hard time with being one of those people, seeing that happen. I think we can do demo, I think we can get that kind of stuff done. But, but, you know, but as far as the actual building process, I, I just think we just got to take a little breath. And that's my opinion.
Yeah, so, again, my thought had been, I was toying with the thought of possibly moving it up, you know, a little bit in the queue on construction just because of financing, but I guess for that matter, then we, we still work on our, on our public information and whatever, so.
And get, and get it ready, get it, you know, build ready, right?
I guess my, uh, my only question is, uh, how, uh, how much more favorable is the rate right now?
Well, I, I had gotten that information from, uh, Greg Johnson from LRS, and he showed you a, a chart there of, uh, historical bond rates and where they were going, so, I mean, right now, they have started to tick up a bit. And they were getting to their, to like a
Do you have a?
Five-year lower or something. Should be in that CIP discussion item there. Who's controlling the, who's controlling the screen?
I am.
Page twenty-six, Keith, of the PDF packet.
Got to get down.
Yeah, it has the rates listed in the, kind of right, just a lot of where your hand is up there, Nate. Go up now. There you go. So you're at the top of one of them.
So.
Is that what you're looking for?
Well, he had, he had estimated the pay, buy, the payback on these, on these rates that are shown on this table. What I, if you go down farther in the packet, he just had a, keep going, there's a couple of PDFs in there that have little, uh, charts on. There, you're getting closer.
Oh, okay.
Keep going.
Page thirty-six.
Uh, right there. So this is a five-year trend in bond rates that he sent, you know, so you see that over the last year, they've been going down quite dramatically.
And.
Down into the two, two-point-two-five percent range, and now he showed that there's a little bit of a tick up right now, so where are they going to go from here?
The, the dot on the left is where, under our current plan, we would borrow money at, four-point.
That was just a low point of the last five years or so. He had, you'd have to go back to those tables again. You could see what rates he assumed in the, uh, financing plan.
No, I, I guess I was just thinking, or what I was seeking to clarify is the dot up over between four and four and a half, is that where the money or the uh, projected rate was going to be when we would start borrowing?
No, that's just the, that's just the highest it was, it was over this last, this five-year analysis to be. He's showing the trend line, that's just the peak.
Okay.
Way it looks to me, I, you know, he's just highlighted what the highest rate was, so. For instance, in his financing estimates, he was using rates of between for general obligation bonds, one and a quarter and two-point-eight-five percent.
Man, it's really hard to say no when bonds are that low. I mean, the optics aren't good at all, but can, how much, I have to wonder how much better fiscal footing we'd be on otherwise.
Well, before the COVID nineteen, we, it would, it didn't matter. I, I, it wouldn't matter the fiscal footing, it wouldn't matter the optics, it wouldn't matter anything.
Right.
There's hairdressers that aren't working.
Exactly.
There's dentists that aren't working, there's people that aren't working, it does, I, if the money was free, it wouldn't be the right time to do it. It's just flat out, it'd be right, right in your nose, you're the taxpayer, you're flipping this bill, but we're going to go ahead and do it anyway. So that would be my vote, that's my, that's my opinion, not everyone's.
I, I was more wondering.
We, we certainly have enough time to turn it around and watch how this whole process goes.
Yeah, I was more wondering a lot of the.
There's a lot of pain out there, and a lot of us are very fortunate to have the jobs we have or be able to work from home.
Yeah, I have too many friends and family that have lost jobs.
Okay.
Any other trustees have any thoughts?
I am certainly in support of this building, so I, I don't want anyone to misunderstand.
Just a question, yes.
Yep, just the timing wasn't right.
Yeah.
I think it would be important to go ahead with what we can do.
Yeah.
You know, without.
Demolition has to happen.
Demolition, like you said, or, or getting the, the program that we want to show the public, get that together and, you know, so that we, when it, if the time is right, we can go ahead right away.
Yeah, when, yeah, when the time's right.
Yeah.
Because you can't talk to somebody that's, can't pay their current bills or their rent and, and, and then we go ahead and pop for a multimillion dollar building, it's just not going to sit well.
Yeah.
And the public has to be supportive of this.
Yeah, well, give us more time, we won't have to, you know, prepare like by the seat of our pants and get a, a nice solid footing on presenting it.
Yeah, okay, no, I appreciate the perspective, I, yeah, but we need to just kind of reevaluate where you, where we are later in the year here.
I agree with Mark, I think we should go ahead with the demolition, just clear the site.
Right.
Because of buildings and eyesores, it is, it's, it was driven by it, but it's not.
You're, you're going to, people are going to, you know, it's summertime, kids might play around there and.
Right.
You, you don't know how the access is, and we, we got to, we probably have to fence it and get some stuff going there, because there could be some potential hazards in there. There is somebody that's reached out to me to, if, if it ain't going to matter, they would certainly like to go in there and take the, uh, the cooler panels, they can't, I, I would, I would recommend letting them chainsaw it out, but if they take the full panel out without leaving a mess for whoever's going to do the demo. But that's up to the demo person, that's what you guys decide.
So we'll, uh.
Say, let the demo person decide what they want.
Yeah, what it's worth, or what, yeah, right now, we have a bill that they're talking about, but, you know, if any can make any difference.
Jen has her virtual hand raised, so she had a question.
Is that all, that she just wants her hand up?
Oh, no, can you hear me?
Yeah, very good, yeah.
Hi, um, I was just wondering, um, I may have to be doing a comprehensive plan map amendment for another property. Um, this, the property that we have for G and B is also going to need one, are you okay with me getting it ready with a rezone and comprehensive plan map amendment at this time?
I would agree.
Is that a portion of it, of getting it ready?
I would agree.
Yeah.
I, I, but, but just for, for, just something even better, you had come in so clear, Jen, you can't believe this.
Yeah.
And it just, it bothers me that Nate has hidden this from us. It's like you're in the room, he, when he was talking the same thing, so I don't understand why he's now surprising us with this tonight.
I have really awful internet too, so.
Well, you're, you're, it's like you're in the room, so it's really good.
Well, good.
We're at ten with Gary.
We're at ten right now, okay.
And Yi, you mentioned, Yi, did you have any comments on this discussion on this at all?
No, I don't, I, I, I concur with, uh, I actually concur with, uh, what Mark is saying, uh, you know, I, I, as much as, uh, how, you know how great the loans were, the interest rates and everything are right now, I just feel that it wouldn't be right for us to, uh, um, in a sense, give, put more money or more concerns on our, on, on our local residents, you know, I think they have more things that they need to worry about at this moment here, so I, I concur with what, uh, with trustee Maloney.
Okay. Are you and Jen in the same room? I mean, it sounds like you're in the same room, so.
No, 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 I have a headset on, so hopefully it helps a lot.
That's amazing. Wow. Okay.
Okay, well, I guess you got enough flavor on, on that, Keith.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I think that covers my report, unless you have other questions for me.
Okay, move on to.
Can I follow up on that quick? So is that just related to the building or the entire CIP in general?
It's the building.
Just the building, portion of it, okay.
It's my.
Just the building.
Okay.
That, that visual, that, like Nate said, that optical would be really hard for some people to swallow.
Yep.
I would have to agree. Is that weather out there?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Okay, is he on the speaker too?
Any other questions for?
In case anyone's bad, we need to do a new building.
All right, let's move on to number, item number twenty, clerks. Sherry, you've had a, a busy goal recently and probably still.
Mm-hmm. We're just, um, kind of getting things closed up with the April election, we didn't use, use the Badger books because of the, because of having to sign the screen, and we just thought there'd be too much of that, even though they had to still sign the poll books. And we're not going to use the Badger books again for May, just because we think it's, in these times, we just think that's, it's not a good choice right now. But we are trying to, uh, close out the April election while working on the May election, and the requests continue to come in, so staff is continuing to stay busy sending out absentee ballots, I think people like the myvote.wi.gov and they can request their ballot and they can, they can look at the status on their ballot and so, been hearing some good comments on that. Of course, people are like, you know, they expect to see the results like this, we were getting phone calls.
Yeah.
Why can't, I voted, doesn't show I voted, it's because we don't have it entered yet, give us a little bit. But, um, and as you can see, the turnout was a little bit less than the last presidential preference. But I'm, and I'm sure it had a lot to do with, with the timing, with the COVID.
Fusion of what you're doing too.
Yeah. What's the projection on the next one? What, what are we talking about, just this one?
Congressional.
I've never ever had an election like this before, so it's just really hard to make that call, but I'm just kind of going with, I think I'm going to go with what we, what I did for the April election.
I think so.
Because I've got, the interest is there, people are interested in voting on that right now, so.
Sherry, was there any issues with, I, I don't, absentee balance cut, and the absentee led the way as far as voter totals go, but did you have a lot that had gotten rejected, do we have any that were lost?
We had, I think we had, I can't remember if the number's eighty or ninety, but let's just say eighty-five that we rejected. Whether they would have been missing a signature, um, a lot of people lived alone and they couldn't have visitors, like people over here at Birchwood, they couldn't have visitors, so we called them and said, hey, we're missing the signature, and they said, there's just no way, I can't, I can't have visitors, I can't have any, anyone sign, and we had to reject those, or if they didn't, um, sometimes the witness will sign and they'll just accidentally leave the address off, we can't accept it with no address. And of course, we had some that were, um, undeliverable, but the majority of them that we rejected were because they were, uh, missing the voter signature.
Oh, that's good, you caught those. Okay.
And using West lanes again?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, Keith, talked to, talked to Dale, and I confirmed it with his daughter, who manages over there. Yeah, and so, that's a goal for May. It sure would be nice if they were open by then and this could bring in some business for them, but I don't know.
Yeah, that was the biggest complaint I heard is that the bar wasn't open.
Well, I was even thinking, you know, people would.
It was just a little attempt.
Well, no, but I was thinking, it would be nice, because you'd.
I've, 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 I've done it twice.
I think people would take advantage of lunch or dinner or whatever.
I think they would too, just to visit and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Sherry?
No. Good job.
Move on to finance, Jess has a report in there, pretty brief, she's working on audit.
I think Jessica's online, I don't know if she had anything she needed to.
Jess, are you online?
I think she's just watching the live YouTube feed.
I'm, I'm, I'm in here.
Oh, she is, okay.
Nothing more to ask, okay.
Okay, all right, thanks, Jess.
Yeah.
Okay, fire EMS, uh, there's no reporting out here, parks recreation. Keith, you want to, is Sean online?
I believe he is.
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're up, Sean.
Yeah, I did have a report in the packet. One of the items that I wanted to highlight, uh, because of the, obviously, the safer at home order in place and, uh, planning for the upcoming season, uh, we do still have the agreement with the YMCA that has not been completed. Uh, and we also, uh, with the safer at home order through May twenty-sixth, it kind of gives us a short window or timeframe to decide, uh, how we proceed with the upcoming season. Um, it's a little less than two weeks before we were scheduled to be open. Um, and then the new, uh, order thirty-one that came out today, that also lays out the phase implementation of opening the state back up, so. It, uh, we have our own deadlines as far as getting the, um, facility back together. A decision will have to be made early May, if we're going to try to open up on time, uh, because it's, it's going to take us nearly a month to get the facility all up and running, get everything in order, get everything on, you know, ready to go, so. Um, we have talked to the YMCA also, they figure they can get everybody ready to go in about two weeks' time if we would decide that, uh, we are, our goal was to open by June sixth.
So June sixth was the original date?
Yep, June Saturday, June sixth was our original date.
And there was some private parties, uh, prior to that that have been canceled?
Yeah, we had three preseason rentals that were scheduled, uh, starting with June first and then the fourth and fifth. They were all school groups, so we only received notification from one at this point that they wanted to cancel, and that was the one on June first. But we're pretty sure the John Muir and East Everett Junior High School will also cancel, but a lot of people have, a lot of things on their minds right now, so I'm sure that's not top on their list of, uh, contacting us, so. I figured I would give them a little time, otherwise I will contact them to verify.
Sean, in regards to the, the latest from the governor, any impact on our other parks, like the, um, you know, the, the disc park and stuff where you can have the social distancing, uh, they change anything, and what's the status, and you said the dog park has been open, what about the other parks? You know, walking paths, things like that, that we can do with social distancing?
Well, right now, the, um, I would assume that we could probably reopen the disc golf course, uh, based on the governor's order that's supposed to go into effect on the, um, twenty-fourth, with, you know, the order twenty-eight where they're going to allow golf courses to open up, so. I'm assuming the disc golf course could be open as of this Friday, um, because that's similar to regular golf. But the rest of the parks. Um, but the rest of the parks remain, uh, all the playgrounds are still closed, the fitness trail, uh, the, uh, skate park mostly because that's a place where people would congregate and we know that in particular, that they probably wouldn't follow the social distancing rules there, and it would be an enforcement problem. Um, I know that, like youth baseball met last night to discuss their season, which would typically start next week. Um, and what their determination is, if they're going to try to start in June or what. I have not heard what their, if they made a decision last night. Uh, but as we see the warm weather and things, people getting out even more once it gets warmer, we may have to, um, monitor like the baseball fields, the soccer fields, um, because no team sports are allowed or contact sports, so. That's one thing that'll have to be monitored a little closer too.
Okay.
They, they also have put out some guidelines regarding like restroom too. Um, and the cleaning of them, so if we would decide to open our restrooms up prior to the May twenty-sixth date, they are suggesting that they get cleaned once a day or even more often if possible. Um, and that's something that we typically did on a twice weekly basis. And unfortunately, I think it will encourage more people to use the parks if we have the restrooms open, but you know, it's one of those where is it a good option or a bad option to open them up? And then can you get the supplies to keep them stocked and clean? And that's what we're hearing from other departments is you're going to keep them open as long as they can keep them stocked and clean at this point, once they are able to open them.
All right. Well, I have a feeling things are going to change, change frequently in here.
You have about two weeks left for the pool.
Yeah, we should have a decision by May fourth to decide if we're going to try to hit the opening date, because there's a lot of work to prepare the facility and start it up. Um, we have started doing work up there. We've been working up there for a month already, but.
Okay.
Um, but we don't want to go too much into preparations if, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Obviously, the order to get it extended again, we don't know, so the, the biggest unknown for us at this point as far as the aquatic center.
Yeah, it, it sure would be a nice hope for, you know, everyone to be able to open that up, so.
Yeah, and if you get, if you get a chance to look at that Order Thirty-One.
Right.
That final phase three only, or, you know, or final, or phase two only allows fifty plus, fifty people to, uh, to, uh, a maximum group size, uh, so we'd have to reach phase three, which is literally everything back open as usual to make it feasible or viable for us to open the, the aquatic center, because fifty people, um, is not a lot, and that would include all our staff, so literally forty people could come in the facility at one time.
Plus staff. What is normal attendance there? You know, on, on average?
Average, I mean, good weather days, we're doing four, six hundred people probably.
Okay, wow. Thank you.
So that's today's order you're referring to, right, my, my?
Right, yeah, that's what he said, Thirty-One.
Correct, Order Thirty-One.
Okay, any questions for Sean? All right, thank you, Sean.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, item number twenty-three, plan and development. Jen, you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay.
So, um, I will have to be scheduling a plan commission meeting coming up. Um, I do have a couple requests, uh, that I'll probably need to go forward with public hearings, so I'll have to work with Nate um, to figure out how exactly to handle those. Um, I have a conditional use, um, request that I got today um, for a gentleman who is, um, building a home and then, um, probably for an item later on, on the agenda, then also to, um, I will need to, um, rezone the business of the Mashuda property. Because right now it is zoned ag.
So when are you looking for a meeting? How soon?
Um, I don't, I was talking to Keith about this. Um, my deadline for hearing notices would be this Thursday, so I don't know if I'm going to be able to get all of that pulled together in time, um, so we may have to see if we can maybe do a special meeting, because otherwise the next week it would fall on your next board meeting. Or the board meeting, the second board meeting of May.
Okay. All right, so Keith was posted. Any questions for Jen?
We're at eleven now.
And Sherry just.
John's here. How far does somebody have to step out? For a little bit, do you mind?
Sure.
We can only have.
If you're a willing volunteer.
Yeah, all right.
I can go to my desk.
Yeah. Or just go down the hallway. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Jen?
Sat on the floor.
All right, thank you, Jen. Item number twenty-four, police. I know Clay had, everybody has a copy of their annual report. He asked if he needed to be here tonight, and I said, no, so.
Okay.
Given the circumstances. Uh, so let's move on to item number twenty-five, public works.
Mike? Yeah, I guess, uh, the spring is kind of kicked off like we normally would. Uh, we've got a bunch of, uh, street maintenance bid packets together out there. Um, last week we started, uh, working on some valve replacements, um, street sweeping, pothole patching. Uh, got some guard rail, um, repairs on Schofield Ave. So I've got several other items in here for some of the equipment-related and, uh, rehabilitation items for, uh, utilities. And TDS and their crews are back at it, um, installing conduits, so it's been a lot of, uh, Digger's Hotline locates and, um, also fixing, uh, a main, water main break, uh, repair that, uh, got hit on Newport Avenue last week by one of their contractors, so.
So is that TDS by the bridge right now, on Ross?
Yeah.
That's them again? Okay, all right.
Yep.
So now they go into the houses?
Uh, I believe they still, so last year they had the initial plan, which was split between aerial and, um, underground conduit. And it sounded like they could come to an agreement with WPS regarding use of the existing poles. So everything that they were going to have above ground aerial, they are now burying, so.
Oh, wow.
I think this spring they had tried to get a jump on all of that, those items that they thought were going to be quick, um, aerial installs, so.
So if they've already dug the ground up, they're done?
Yeah, if they already dug up the ground by you, they're done, but they, they'd skipped around saving the aerial work, so.
Okay, any other questions for Michael?
Thank you.
All right, number twenty-six, technology. Nate?
Um, I don't have anything major to bring to you on, I guess. You know, a lot of, we have a lot of people working remotely, um, so just trying to support that effort and make sure everything is going well. Um, everybody seems to have pretty good access to server resources. Um, and then this time of year, usually for me, is always getting ready with the utility crews as they begin flushing and make sure we have the apps um, for their iPads up and running, um, so been working on that quite a bit.
Questions for Nate?
Good job.
I'm in the speaker.
Yeah, I'll give him a shameless plug. He's done a good job helping us work on communicating with the crew and, you know, everybody kind of out there remotely and making sure we have ways to make sure we know who, who's doing what and staying in touch, so. Good job.
Okay, item number twenty-seven, March twenty twenty, building permits, looking for acknowledgement.
Move to. Move to acknowledge?
Motion by Feeny, second by Maloney. On the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda, is there anything anybody would like to pull out? We have three items, vouchers, uh, twenty nineteen annual recycling report and twenty nineteen annual green tier report and twenty twenty goals submitted.
Motion to, um, accept, approve, I guess, and acknowledge.
Twenty-nine, move to acknowledge, items twenty-nine to thirty-one.
Second.
Motion by Ermeline, second by Feeny. On the question? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-three, ordinance number twenty dash zero zero six, an ordinance admitting section two point two one four, parent D, parent five, entitled Community Development Authority. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Maloney and second by Feeny. On the question? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-four, Resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero four, authorizing resolution for special assessments for Weston School Neighborhood East Reconstruction Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ermeline, second by Maloney. On the question? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-five, Weston Pilot Kitchen Food Scrap Drop Off Program.
Move to approve, um, with a caveat, well, do I do it now?
Well, we can, you can have discussion now. We don't have to have a motion right away.
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess I'll start. My, my one concern is, is a three thousand dollar budget, and I thought we were gonna, that, I thought, even when it was initially proposed, they didn't have a cost in there that we're paying to have them pick up this, this dumpster, this food deposit.
See, I was, I assumed they did, there was going to be a charge, because that was one of the things I, I personally don't think it's, we need to add any more to the village staff duties.
You know, I saw the four letters or the five letters and, and I think we even asked the question last time, you know, how many, even to get this going, and I, it was a very, very small number, six or twelve, to get it going, and I just thought, boy, that's, um, holy man, that's really, you know, when the product we're talking about can go right in your garden, you know? It doesn't have to go to the landfill, so, or your neighbor's garden, so. But there's a pickup cost, there's also a cost to the resident, you know, twelve or fifteen dollars, and then there's a budget of three thousand, then there's the cost of our, of our personnel, you know, policing it, and then a fenced-in area plus a, another container. And, um, I, uh, hundred seventeen dollars for every pickup. And, um, I, I, I wouldn't want to just say no to not try the pilot, to see, but some of these residents had in their letters that they would have, um, that they're, they're used to having curbside pickup. I, I'm, I'm sure in Madison, you could probably enjoy that. Or maybe even Point, you know, so, or Eau Claire, but, um, I, um, and I guess you got to start from somewhere, so I, I don't want to be the person in the, you know, in the front saying no just because I know better, because I don't. I have no idea if this would work or, or if this would take off. So if it's truly a pilot and we just test it, but then I, what I was going to say, I'll, I'll move to approve, but I want to know what parameters we're going to put in place. Where is the worth? Where is it? You know, it probably doesn't have to pay for itself, but it has to have some value. We have to have a, a amount of people using it. If it's six to twelve, or six to eighteen, or six to twenty, I just don't see that feasible. Couple hundred? Yeah, that might be something. So that, those are just my thoughts.
Okay, where are you going to do this?
Uh, she said right back here.
Okay, we have a fenced-in area, we have a garbage thing or whatever.
I, I.
Without the smell.
So it's going to have a, a cover to it, but initially on one of these documents, I just saw produce, uh, fruit and vegetables, coffee and eggshells. But then I read further into it, and then it had dairy products, um, all, all the above plus dairy and bread. Also bread products, so bread, dairy, uh, fruit and vegetables, coffee and, um, eggshells.
If we can't get people to put recycling in recycling bins, what are they going to do with this?
Well, the issue we're going to have probably is what happens if restaurants want to use it? Is it only for citizens? Because the same thing happened over here with, uh, our, our, um, what's it called now? Advantage or Violia or, you know, Lloyd Brothers, you know, one of those. So all, all that stopped, yet we're still paying the same amount of money. You know, there's a lot of things that have stopped now with all the recycling that we're still, you know, we still have to pay the same amount of money. We should have got some money back. We should have got a credit. So, and, and the biggest beef there was, is that, um, uh, store owners and, and, uh, you know, businesses were using it as a cardboard drop off instead of paying to have it picked up. So if we get a couple fills from some restaurants, which would easily fill that up, and then what, what if, what is the contaminant? If there's meat in there, is that a contaminant?
Yeah.
It, I mean, just like that, so, you know, you can contaminate, the, the gentleman from Advantage, uh, said, if you put metal in with the cardboard or glass with the cardboard, it's immediately, the whole dumpster is contaminated, so you can't utilize it for what it's for.
Well, that was my thought, is that, I mean, you have a list of things you can put in there, but you've got your recycling cart, and how much is that been, people are putting in stuff they shouldn't be, and?
Well, I mean, you know, recycling garbage, uh, garbage is, we pay for that.
Right.
Through our tax rate dollars, we pay for that, and that's, that's a service we provide. This is a, this is compost waste going to a private recycle, and that sells compost.
For profit.
It's a for-profit company. So I, I, this is where I struggle with, uh, it's one thing to put it out as a, as a service to our residents, it's another thing to.
Have to pay.
We're, we're giving them this so they can make money off compost. And if anybody's ever bought compost soil, and I have, it's three hundred bucks for a, a, a small load of this. It's really pricey. So we're paying to have a private company who's going to make money off the compost. We're going to pay for every time they collect this based on a hundred twenty-seven dollars per collection. So every time they come and pick that up, we're paying a hundred twenty-seven dollars, so they can take it, turn it into compost and sell composted soil.
Well, that was.
That's where I struggle with it. I, I, I struggle with i- if this was done by the county and, and this went back to the public or they had a compost that everybody could go get, well, they're selling it. It's, they're selling their composted soil, so. Why, I, I think it's fine to put this out there and they can come and collect it, but why are we paying to have to, to have them pick it up? I, to me, it's great for the business.
I, I don't, I don't even care. I don't even care if, if, um, individuals come and take it, as long as it doesn't cost us any money. You know, I mean, if, 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 if we do a rotation of four or five, uh, organic, uh, you know, growers or big gardens or whatever, that'd be great, but that hundred seventeen or hundred twenty-seven kind of twists me up a little bit. You know, coming here tonight, I saw a gentleman in the back, uh, in the, you know, and he was shoveling, you know, sand. And is that, is that, is that okay?
Um, we tell people they can take like a five gallon bucket, but.
Oil's more than a five gallon bucket.
It shouldn't be people filling up their trailers or anything like that.
Yeah.
Maybe, would we have the same take if somebody put in a bin says, put your recycled cans here? And then somebody came, picked them all up, went over and took them over to Jaeger and took the money off it, and we provided a location for it? I, I, I mean, it's the same concept.
Right.
We're, we're paying, we're paying, and, and then we, we would have to pay them to come, to deliver, to deliver the cans to them? I mean, it's kind of the same.
Is the three thousand dollars?
It's kind of the same process, where, you know, I, I just, us paying a hundred twenty-seven dollars for every time they pick up compost that they use for their composting business just doesn't seem right. I have no problem putting a container in, but I do have a problem with, uh, you know, not just a, the three thousand dollar budget, which is primarily just for delivering for them to pick it up.
So that is what that is?
I think that was for.
Valerie does have her hand up, so.
Oh, yeah, Valerie Phillips, please.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, very good.
Okay, um, so yes, remember this is a pilot project, and so we want to see, get the interest of the public. And, um, and if we find out, you know, after so much time of testing it out that no one's using it, then we would just cancel it. Um, but we're hoping that, um, after hearing a lot of the interest from people that came up and talked to us last year at our home composting event about wanting a place to put their food scraps, but they, they don't want to compost in their backyard, they don't want to put it in the landfill either. And that's kind of what spurred this on. Um, so we, we would not be allowing restaurants, anybody that would want to use this program would have to register with us first, and then we would let them know where the container is, that's not like open to the public. And, um, and we would be monitoring that container and having it serviced as often as we need to, maybe once a week, once every two weeks. And again, it's, it's behind the municipal center, so I, I'm not exactly sure who would be complaining of smell, because it's not like it's out in the public right of way where people are walking past it. Uh, it would be anybody who's just adding to the pile that would be smelling anything. Um.
Well, and, and I'm fine with all that, except the charge for, um, the hundred seventeen dollars. I, I, if, if we can pull that component out, uh, because that's the dangerous spot, I mean, if you're doing once a week, it's going to be six thousand dollars.
Well, we wouldn't go over the budgeted amount.
Well, how could, what if it fills up? Then what are you going to do?
Well, then we'd have to watch it, and if, if we came, if we recognized that we're getting close, then I guess we'd have to talk to the board again. And we wouldn't just go over that amount.
Well, I, I would, I would approve this without the component of the pickup charge.
And I have to.
They, they've got to be in this too, if they want to be part of this, or
I agree.
we get a, a group of twelve farmers over here on this side of town that pick it up every, every sixth week and then use it in their own composting. I'm sure we could find people to do that.
So the, the thing too is, is there are no other local, um, businesses that are, that have the DNR licensing to accept the food waste to do this kinda composting? I, I believe that Sue's is the only one right now that's closest to us, and that's why we're working with Sue's.
So a farmer with a large garden couldn't just take it?
Well, then they wouldn't be providing it to the community, it would be for their own purposes.
So, so wait a minute, Sue's is gonna pick this up and charge us for it, and then provide it back to us?
No, it will be for a, any public to go there and purchase, but.
Well, it's the same thing.
Goal is to keep it out of the landfill and, um, so that, to give people an alternate place to put their food scraps, a more responsible place to place them versus in the landfill.
I remember when they during that presentation, that was my, I had forgotten about, you know, that, was thinking, okay, we're gonna pay them to pick it up, and then, they're gonna sell it.
And they're gonna sell compost.
Well, you gotta pay to be part of it, then you gotta pay to get it picked up, and then if you want it, then you gotta go pay to, to buy it.
Well, actually.
What?
So, no, there is no, we aren't charging, we are not gonna be charging residents to participate, um, in the, uh, Public Works meeting, that was one of the things that came out of there, was they felt we should have charged registration fees.
Oh, okay.
But.
Okay.
But it, it's still, it still goes down to the fact that we're paying a for-profit company to give them the product that they need to, to supply their product at a, at a price to the public. I mean, conceptually, that's it, if we're looking at, at simply a, a landfill, then why would we exclude restaurants and everything else? I mean, if we're really doing this just to try and, and keep some of these food scraps out of the landfill, then why aren't we collecting from restaurants? Why, why would they not be allowed to put in a bin here? Um, and I agree with Mark, I, I would have no problem approving this if we did not have to pay, if, if our taxpayers didn't have to pay to collect this material for a private for-profit company. I, I just fundamentally don't agree with that.
I, I, I have a question for Valerie as well. Uh, can you, can you walk me through what the thought process was when the Public Works and Utility Committee reviewed this? Cause I noticed it says that they approved it, I guess, uh, did they have any concerns, and what was the discussions, um, like during the committee meeting?
Um, I would, it was a while ago, and I would say it was probably similar concerns that, that you guys are bringing up, other than, um, I don't think that they were concerned about the, the cost to have the carts emptied, and I, and that's probably because we've got that three thousand dollars in the budget, I'm guessing, but, but they did have similar concerns.
But, but we put that three thousand dollars in there for this, it's not just sitting there, right?
It sits in the budget for this, and there's like.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so it's still an expenditure. So it's, you know, so I saw the four letters, and just estimate, you know, how many people actually talked about this? Um, I, I know you referred at that meeting in August, um, or in fall, that, I think I asked a question, how many would it, you know, would, would be a success? And I thought you said like a dozen, right?
Possibly.
Yeah, you, you might've said, I, I, I knew it was close to a dozen, maybe two dozen. And so for, you know, even four dozen, even fifty people using this, we're gonna ask everybody else to spend, you know, potentially six thousand dollars a year, if it gets picked up once a, once a week. I, I, if we can just get rid of that one component of the expense of that, picking up that cart, I don't even care about the rest, cause the rest just falls, i- if we just don't have that one component in there, and find another outlet for somebody else to, to use it. Now, I know you said then, but then we don't get to use it, or buy it, I should say. But at lea, but our, I think our number one goal, our initial goal is to keep it out of the landfill, right?
Right.
Our, our first goal is not to buy it, is, our first goal is to save the landfill, right?
Well.
No?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But also just to give another, give everybody another outlet as far as, uh, you know, getting, or creating more compost.
Yeah.
Well, the farmer would create compost for whatever.
So Valerie, I know we haven't had a chance to talk about this, uh, but, uh, you received a letter of support from Melissa Johnson about the, uh, landfill savings, and of course, this is always an issue, uh, reducing volume that goes in the landfill. Um, would the county be willing to, uh, take on any cost related to this, rather than have this, uh, have this be the responsibility of the village, do you think?
I, I could certainly ask the question.
So should we pull, Gary, do you have something on this?
Yeah, why don't you put in your own compost pile?
In our own compost?
You got me, you make, you make your leaves and make compost.
I don't, I don't think we can legally.
I don't, I don't think we're licensed for food waste, though.
Oh?
Oh. Okay.
I don't know, you have to be licensed for the food waste.
Okay, well.
Are other municipalities doing this, here locally?
What point is?
Stephen's Point, Madison.
Pardon?
I know Stephen's Point and Madison are doing it.
But Marathon County, no, and the only outlet that we know of is Sue's, right?
Correct.
And Olson's.
What?
Olson's takes stuff too. Mike, what would it take to get your license card?
I don't know.
Oh, Olson's, upon, uh, yeah, K, uh, XN.
Well, they do leaves and brush and things like that.
He takes, uh, coconut, all that stuff from, he takes a bunch of stuff from, for your floral as well.
Oh. Some major black dirt up there, boy.
I think we need to, uh, verify the food waste component, I don't, I'm, I'm hearing that, that food waste is more of the issue.
Should we just postpone this, or, um?
Yeah.
What, what do you?
What's Val, Valerie, is this time sensitive? This doesn't necessarily have to start at any particular time, right?
No, I can, we can hold off a little bit.
Let's get a little more information, so what do we need to do?
Uh, it would be postponed. Um, I guess for me, in, in addition to seeing if there's, if there's a way to, you know, get rid of the cost component, I want, uh, to see what parameters they're going to be using, including number of people signing up, uh, estimated, uh, estimated poundage versus actual, uh, frequency of pickup, uh, revenue sent back into the, uh, community as part of a, as part of, uh, efficiency measurements, um, so that, operating under the assumption that we go through this with the costs taken up, we can make a more informed decision.
And Valerie, my question is, did Sue's come to us and ask about this?
Uh, well, they approached me last spring, um, and then actually, that kind of, I mean, went nowhere, but then it was when we had our home composting event, that myself and Kelly Adlington, working for Marathon County, when we were working together that day, she brought, she brought the home composting event, or the, uh, some sort of a pilot project up, cause it's something that we brought up in the past, um, but we just never took it anywhere, and so after she brought it up, and after we had a lot of interested people coming through our tent, that's, that's kinda what brought the discussion on again. So, and then it just helped that, that I recalled talking to Sue's about teaming up with us, and so that was, we, it just felt was the perfect fit. But I mean, I'm not, I'm willing to look elsewhere, I just don't know of anybody else in the area that does this.
Well, obviously, you've heard Olson does, they got that Busy Bee, that Moosie Bee. I, I think if we approach other people who do composting, and they make money off it, and they're looking for compost stuff, I, I personally, Sue's approached us, and I assume they're the one that asked for the hundred twenty-seven dollars per collection?
That, that was kind of an estimate of what their cost would be.
Okay, so, why don't we contact some of the other ones that do composting, and find out if we provide a space, and that they could just come and pick it up and empty it? I, I, I just really struggle with us paying to transport compost to a, a private business that makes a profit off of this. And I think if people want it, and they need those, and they need those food scraps, they need those materials to create their compost that they sell, and it's pricey, um, then I think we may have some people that'd be willing to, to do it on their own. We'll put a cart up, we'll come, we'll pick it up, but for us to have to pay to, to send this out to a private company, I just fundamentally disagree with that. I agree with the, with the recycling, the composting portion of it, and providing a space for the public to drop it off, but we, it should not be added expense to the taxpayers for the few people that will use it. And, uh, so I, I would like to know where all these other, Busy Bee, uh, Olson, where do they get their materials from to compost? Yeah, I, I, I think there needs to be a little more here, and I don't think we should just, because Sue's, because we had a conversation with this particular vendor, and they're asking for us to fund, um, we've got three thousand dollar budget, and to Mark's point, if it becomes popular, it's six grand if they do, pick it up once a week, um, plus staff time involved here. Uh, I think for a for-profit business, I think it, it really should be more of a partnership, it seems like most of the onus is on the village. Um, you know, at, at least monetarily. So I think you should check with the others and find out, would they be willing to pick it up? If they put a cart out here, and we, and we gave you a space for it, will they pick it up on their own? I, I'd like answers to those questions before I, I would say yes to this.
Along with, uh, explicit parameters.
Well, it's a pilot, but yeah.
It's a pilot, so.
Some more, yeah.
You put whatever parameters you want in it.
What is, what is this contact person's name at Sue's?
Uh, Deb Shaw.
Deb Shaw?
Yep.
So do we need a motion to table this?
Postpone.
We'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ziegler, second by Maloney.
Postpone.
Or postpone, whatever.
Postpone.
Whatever.
Either way, we can bring it back up.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, okay, we have a motion, a second, on a question, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, Valerie, you've got some homework to do and see what you can come up with, but if you can answer some of those questions and address the cost issue, I think you might get a little more favorable response.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, Valerie.
Okay, item number thirty-six, proclamation number P dash twenty dash zero zero one, a proclamation designating April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty as Arbor Day in the Village of Weston.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Feeny, second by Ermeline. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number thirty-seven, purchase replacement and loader.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion by Maloney, second by Ziegler. On the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-eight, purchase replacement grader in lieu of plow truck.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-nine, street sweeper lease agreement.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Feeny. On the question, Michael, I, I read through that. How, how, how can we have a lease and we don't under, and the terms are, are?
I thought it was clear, I mean, I remember sitting in the little conference room with the guys, saying, this makes no sense to me, why you're giving us a trade-in value when we're not owning the machine? They're like, yep, this is our lease program, this is how it works, and I'm like, are you sure? I'm like, this is a horrible financial decision on your part, I mean, great for the village, but this doesn't make any sense for you. The guy's like, yep, nope, this, this is how it works, this is how it goes, like.
They, they want you on that lease.
Yeah.
We, 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 we actually traded in seventy tractor.
Yeah.
And, and, and leased the tractors, but they absolutely do not want us buying tractors anymore, and they want us leasing, so that's what this company wants?
Yeah.
And then in the end, the end, it'll be okay for them. But they need you to, to twist over and get to that side.
Yeah, but.
And, you know, so.
Yeah, I think Wally's question though is, you know, they're giving us this trade-in value for our existing machine, and then, um, was it three weeks ago now, you know, the guy called me on the Friday saying, hey, you're making that last lease payment now? And I was like, no, we're not making this last lease payment, you guys are. Like, oh, well, we're using that as the trade-in, I'm like, yeah, I kinda thought you guys were double accounting back last August, so, I'm like, we don't have a hundred thousand dollars to pay for this, so we're not making that last lease payment. So that's, so I don't know if it was just the new salesman that kinda got things messed up, but then, you know, their upper management wasn't ready or willing to, uh, eat the hundred thousand, so, um, you know, talking with Keith and, we had our virtual meeting with them, we thought it was only right to open it back up and get a new arrangement, cause, you know, they have a machine, I mean, they're trying to deliver it to us.
I guess I'd understand part, did they win out, or did somebody else?
Yeah, so they still ended up, um, you know, they, they gave us value back, um, on it, you know, they.
And you still did, yeah.
We ended up, we kinda ended up splitting the difference on what the value of the machine was, what, right, for what they sold, wound up selling it for, in the end.
Yeah, we ended up getting.
Was it like, like machines or two different models?
We got the same one that we.
We're, we're getting the same model, just five years newer, but there was a, a competitor that had a similar machine that.
So, I mean, the John Deere, John Deere, or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, Mack, Mack, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, you bought the same one, what was the, was this just a lemon, or what? The John Deere?
Oh, the loader one?
Yeah.
So that's the loader question?
That's the loader.
Um.
Yeah, the sweeper's totally different.
I know.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So the loader, um, yeah, the hydraulic issue, for whatever reason, it, it was choppy, you know, people would complain after, you know, four hours working in it, that their bodies just ached. Um, we had John Deere reps from Iowa come up, and they took the loader down there for a month, I think it was two summers ago, to see if they could figure it out, um.
Is it Tony's loader?
Uh, no, it's, unfortunately, it's the loader that really nobody wants to use. So, you know, we're still.
Tony, Tony Hall's in his loader.
Yeah.
Oh, my heavens. Boy, is he, if you blink your eye, he's already out of your near.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's one reason why we got the good trade-in value on the loader was. But yeah, so for the sweeper, I. That was.
Well, not the old one, what, twenty-four thousand a year?
Thirty-five thousand.
No, the, the previous.
The, the, the previous. The, the lease we, that is ending at the end of this month, or, yeah, end of this month, we're, we're paying thirty-five thousand dollars a year right now. Um, the lease that they initially offered us back in August with the trade-in value was for twenty-five thousand a year.
Okay, that's very good.
So, and then once they realized that we weren't making that hundred thousand dollar payment, and it was up to them, they're like, well, we can't give you that lease price, and I said, well, I can't agree to anything else unless you guys prove something.
Out of curiosity, what is a new one, if you paid cash, what does it cost?
Uh, it's about three hundred, a little over three hundred thousand.
And lifetime, uh, what's, what's the life expectancy on a sweeper?
Once you hit about seven years, you're putting probably fifteen, twenty grand into rehabbing that, and then it just slowly wears down after that, so that's, that's the reason why we opted to lease the street sweepers is, once you hit really that six-year mark, all your wear parts start falling, you know, it, it's a major rehab cost to, uh, keep it going, and then it, it slowly deteriorates after that.
At one point in time, we did buy them. And we had one, and we had to get rid of it and buy another one, and we still owed on that one.
Oh, we backwards, yeah.
Cause it, the, the scale to pay it back, the machine didn't last that long.
I think we have to vote on this yet?
Yep. Okay. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty, Mesker well rehabilitation proposal.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty-one, Bladle well fence.
Move to approve?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Joan.
Yeah.
On the question.
On the question. Can this be our last fence we buy, and then when we build things, just graffiti the heck out of them? Hey, go buy any train yard. Every, you know, it is just, it's reality. If I'm, if, I used to have a train set, and now if you go to a hobby shop and buy cars, they're already graffitied. So it's, 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 it's a done deal. So, you know, here we are, we get all messed up with an X or a heart, or a, whatever they put on there, graffiti the heck out of places, let it be done.
Have a con, have a neighborhood contest.
Yes.
Let, let her go, let her go.
Get a mural.
I mean.
A mural, yeah.
You know, I, I, of course, I'm being humorous, but I, I mean, you know, seriously, sometimes I, I go buy craft, and I see those train cars, and I just go, really? Really, this is what it's gotten to, you know, so, anyway.
Some, some.
They're very good. So we, we might be holding back some really good talent up here, you know, that they could, you know. They're very good. So we, we might be holding back some really good talent up here, you know, that they could, you know, were, were stifling somebody's artistic.
Yeah, some of it, not, not too artistic.
Anyway, I'm, I'm sorry, I elongated the meeting.
So any starving artists we can send to your garage?
Yeah, yeah, not, no, to your garage. I was thinking to your garage.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number forty-two, Kerry, uh, foremost well rehabilitation proposal.
Um, there is a, I guess, a revised one, or with the actual proposal results that I sent out, uh, I don't know, probably around four o'clock today, so I don't know if you guys saw that one. Um, but the, um, we, we received three proposals, uh, one from, uh, CTW Corporation, one from Municipal Well and Pump, and one from, uh, Water Well Solutions, or SUEZ. Um, the CTW proposal, um, had, was at twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, Water Well's at forty-eight thousand eight hundred, and Municipal Well was at fifty-five thousand two forty. Um, so the recommendation would be to, uh, use CTW, uh, at the cost of twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, um, which is roughly about half of what the other two proposals were for. Um, so, and talking with the CTW guys, they've, um, they've done these rehabs before, um, that kind of, um, water quality investigations, spe- specs. I know that was one of the issues with the other two, uh, well companies, is they haven't really worked with them before, so they, and they conflated a little bit with some uncertainty of knowing exactly how the well treatment process was going to go, so.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ermeline.
Second.
Second by Ziegler. On the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
May the second, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
John did.
Thank you.
Number forty-three, construction contract for Weston School Neighborhood East Reconstruction Project.
Move to approve.
Still approve.
Motion by Maloney, was that?
Second by John.
Second by John. On the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number forty-four, engineering services agreement with REI for Callan Avenue Utility Extensions and Looping.
So, so move?
I think Sean.
No, he just said aye on the last one.
He said aye on the last one, he's taking after John.
Motion by Maloney.
Way better.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number forty-five, move shed from former farmer's market site at municipal center to Kennedy Park for youth baseball equipment storage.
Move to approve.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Maloney. On the question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Item number forty-six, Class B and, uh, Class B beer and Class C wine license for Emmanuel Felipe Castillo at Evilia's Restaurant, thirty-four oh six Schofield Avenue.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Feeny. On the question.
On the question, um, do we just have, how many of those do we have left, or is the alcohol one that's the type?
It's the liquor one that.
Liquor one's type?
Yeah, and that's, that, that's what they originally wanted, but I don't have any regular available, I only have the.
Other than that ten thousand hour thing?
Yeah, the reserve I have available with the ten thousand.
A B, a B C, how many of those do we have as a village?
We don't have any limits on B or C.
Beer and wine forever?
We could, we could put them on, but we don't have any on them.
I got it, okay. Good, well, that's good. Okay, anything else on the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, going to closed session, consideration of motion to adjourn in closed session pursuant to section nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent E, Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified, uh, public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, including discussion of sale property on Zinder Street, five acres, um, which lists the parcel numbers, which is formerly the Mashuda property.
Move to adjourn into closed session.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Maloney. Roll call, both please, carry.
Feeny.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Ermeline.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a short recess and give the camera time to shut down, since we're going into closed session. Okay, looking for motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that we sell the property to Gary for twenty thousand an acre, and we push through as quickly as we can his process that he needs to go through.
Along with the couple, um, CSM or whatever, those don't have.
You're talking about five acres?
Yeah.
Five acres.
Five point three, five point eight, or ten feet or something.
Yes, we paid, the proposal is we paid closing costs, the, um, CSM, rezoning, and, um, I guess just to clarify that that reflects a twenty percent reduction in price due to the gas manisme.
Second, I'll second it.
Okay, Sherry, you got all that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. On the question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Okay, remarks from trustees. Barb?
No.
E?
No, not.
John?
No.
Mark?
No.
Nate?
Let's get out of here.
Well, it was nice to be out of the house.
And the only thing I have is, uh, thank you for all, our public for being patient, and I sure as heck hope they open things up quickly, because it's really good.
Please treat to the quiet.
All right, future items, next meeting is May fourth, regular board meeting, and then May eighteenth, and hopefully we'll be on our regular schedule and uh, back to in-person meetings. So we will adjourn meeting, move to, move to adjourn, anyone?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Feeny, second by Barb. Meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-eight.